Just waiting for the green light. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 19, 2011, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Member Bennett, here. Member Brendel, here. Member Sprague, here. Member Swenson, here. Mayor Hovland, here.
For those of you in the audience that had a chance to look at our agenda, you will notice that there are certain items marked with an asterisk. Those are all items handled on a single motion basis as consent agenda items. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, four I.
All right. And, Member Brendel?
Four D.
And what about four E? We're...
It was not on the consent agenda. I told you four E, but it's not consent. So that's fine.
All right. With the exception of four D and I, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. With respect to the agenda, would entertain a motion to move four I right behind the recognition of Sergeant Tholen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor of moving four I up the immediately preceding public hearings, immediately after recognition of Sergeant Tholen, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right. Well, this is one of those important and thrilling evenings that we have, being able to recognize someone that is involved working for our city in public safety. And Chief Long, would you come up, please, and handle this recognition event for Sergeant Brian Tholen from our police department?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brian, if you'd just step off to the side here, that would be great. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Sergeant Brian Tholen in front of the community for an award that he received last night from SODA, which stands for Special Operations Training Association. Brian has worked for the police department since 1996, and during his time here, he has spent 13 years on our SWAT team, eight years as the team leader, team leader as his team supervisor. I'm eventually going to read the commendation given to Brian, but first, I wanted to tell the community how lucky they are to have an officer like Brian working here in Edina. The behind-the-scenes work that takes place to keep our community members safe often goes unnoticed. We often forget that our officers put their lives on the line every day for the citizens of this great city. I often hear my wife talking about how she loves living in her bubble here in Edina, and I take great pride in reminding her that the reason she gets to live in her bubble is because of the work that my officers do every day to help keep her safe. Sixty times during Brian's tenure here, he has had to leave the comforts of his family and home to respond to a situation that has grown so dangerous that our SWAT team had to be activated. Sixty times, Brian's family didn't know what he was going to face. Those same sixty times, Brian put his life on the line for the residents of the city, and that, my friends, is the type of officer that works for the state of Edina. And for that, as a resident, I am extremely thankful. Although the actual award was given to Brian last night, I have asked him to bring it along today, which I'll re-present to him, but I want to share the commendation. Sergeant Brian Tholen is cited for his superior performance of duty while serving as a team member and team leader of the Edina SWAT team from 1998 to 2011. SWAT responds to a variety of critical incidents when special capabilities are needed. Sergeant Tholen completed two rigorous basic SWAT schools and an advanced SWAT school and a handful of specialized training regiments. As his knowledge, skill, and leadership improved, so did his involvement with training SWAT officers from around the state as an instructor. He was a guest presenter at a statewide conference for SWAT officers, becoming a resource beyond the department, and was frequently used to help with team member selection for other SWAT teams. In 2005, the notorious fishing bat bandit robbed the credit union in Edina. His 23rd bank robbery in 18 months, more than any other in Minnesota history. The suspect concealed himself in a nearby garage while a witness followed. Sergeant Tholen was one of the first on scene and quickly established a command post coordinating responding SWAT teams as this event unfolded on live television, and the suspect was eventually taken into custody without incident. In 2008, the Republican National Convention was held in the Twin Cities, calling for a huge need from law enforcement across the region as the venue was heavily protested during a tenuous presidential campaign. The Edina SWAT team, under the direction of Brian Tholen, was selected for a protection role of dignitaries, including the vice president, first lady, and presidential candidates. All were delivered to and from the events safely, under the leadership of Brian Tholen. During Sergeant Tholen's tenure, the team also assisted with the Secret Service with protection of four presidential and one first lady visit around the metropolitan area. During his tenure, he responded 60 times with the SWAT team, 30 as a team leader. Sergeant Tholen's diligence, perseverance, and devotion to duty are most heartily commended and are in keeping with the highest traditions of the Special Operations Training Association, and for that, he is awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award. So, thank you, Brian. Thank you.
so fortunate to have him in our community. Chief, thanks for that nice presentation. It was very meaningful for all of us. Now, we have moved an item up on the agenda. We have Rick Carter with us, who's going to make a short presentation on the ULI Energy Management Consulting Services matter that we have in front of us for potential approval this evening. Welcome, Rick. You want to give your full name and address before you get started here, please?
Thank you. My name is Rick Carter. I live at 108 South Fearley Road in Minneapolis, and that is a tough act to follow. So I'm going to make a very brief presentation to you tonight about the ULI project called the Regional Indicators Project. I'm here representing tonight as a member of the Environment Committee for the ULI, the Urban Land Institute Regional Council of Mayors. And part of our role on the committee was to help select the five pilot cities for the Green Step program, of which you are one. And once that project got started, myself and some of the other people on the committee asked if a couple of cities would participate into what we used to call a pilot within the pilot, but everybody said that was a terrible name. So now it's called the Regional Indicators Project. And essentially, it was. This is just a snapshot, and the examples I'm going to show you tonight are from one of the two cities that's already progressed, Falcon Heights. So this is a snapshot of the 28 best management practices that are in the Green Step program. So you've elected to attempt to complete a certain number of those in order to be able to be designated a Green Step program. But the program that I'm here to talk to you about today is a program that will measure the outcomes that you would seek to change by doing those strategies. So because the particular number five that I picked up here talks about public buildings or government operations, I wanted to really emphasize that I'm going to talk just very briefly about a couple of metrics. But those metrics are things that we're going to collect for the entire city. So, for example, when we're talking about energy, it's not the energy for the city buildings, it's all the energy in the entire city. So this happens to be Falcon Heights, so we draw a line around Falcon Heights, it's everything inside of that. The two cities that have agreed so far have signed an agreement and committed to some funding, like you are, Falcon Heights and St. Louis Park. This is just a piece out of the agreement between ULI and the city of Edina. I'm going to walk through it pretty quickly. When we first started this, because it really is a pilot, we didn't know if we could actually do it. So the first bullet point, you don't need to worry about. We have established that it's feasible. The second bullet point, collecting the last two years of data, for us, that's '08 and '09. We will collect that pretty quickly, probably within the next month or so. Establish a process for collecting data for the next two years. The other two cities are just a little bit out ahead of you, so we've actually met with staff person from St. Louis Park and Falcon Heights, and they're working on 2010 and will do 2011. The idea being that this will perpetuate, if it's a good idea and it's integrated with the staff. And then the fourth bullet point is to make connections over time back to those best management practices. You have your own set of those 28 that I will, we will be looking at and trying to connect to those outcomes. And finally, we'll do some reporting. We've looked around the country and even North America for other examples, and there really are very few examples that are evident now. I'm sure a lot of people are doing this or getting started, and we'll have a lot to compare to in a couple of years. So these are the metrics that we're looking at. We're looking at total energy. In your case, it would be all the gas and all the electricity that go through the utility companies, water from the city, vehicle miles traveled, literally every mile on every road in the entire city, and pounds of waste. It's a little bit of an anomaly. We use county data for that, so it's a little bit prorated, but we can convert it. All of these metrics can be converted to dollars and carbon equivalents, and we can normalize them over jobs and/or population. So my last slide, and then I'll open up to questions. This is the data for one year for Falcon Heights. So you can see at the very bottom, there's a carbon equivalent equation, but for each of the others, we're really trying to make the metric something that people can understand. It's on a per-person basis. We're trying to make it a metric that people can understand, and I think most people know miles, gallons, and pounds. Over time, you'll learn BTUs. It's a coming thing. And finally, make it a number that's sort of something you can grasp, like people can understand seven pounds of waste per day. So the idea, again, is to collect this. It's going to be presented, this topic will be presented at a ULI event to the Regional Council of Mayors on April 28. The idea is to try and get this to go more broadly, so there's more cities doing it. Ultimately, the idea is you can accomplish something more easily if you know what it is. If you can measure something that you want to reduce, you can reduce it. So this gives you a way of having this in front of you, having it in front of your community, and I think you'll be able to make a real impact.
Questions for Rick? Joni and I and Manager Neil sat through a number of presentations last Thursday night with the Energy and Environment Commission. Rick was one of the presenters. And Joni, you may want to comment on our observations on this particular presentation and some of the others as well.
Well, Mr. Carter, this is the third time I've heard your presentation, because I also heard it at the Sustainability Workshop at Central Lutheran Church in Minneapolis a couple of weeks ago. And what struck me after seeing and hearing the presentations again last Thursday evening, and then also a long conversation with a couple of members of the Energy and Environment Commission, is we're in a position different than some other communities because we have data that we've collected in the past. The city has had an intern. There are some members of the Energy and Environment Commission who've spent a lot of time. We have not yet had a framework to plug this information into where we can start to get those comparisons. And I think it's going to be the comparisons that are going to be most interesting to our residents and business owners. Are we making progress in reducing our energy consumption? Does the construction of a new fire station make a difference? The construction of a new public works building make a difference? And so the ability to take the data that has already been collected and put it into a system with ULI and with this project that Mr. Carter is leading is, I think, the thing that I am most excited about and hope that we will have a report back to our residents that will start to lead people to connect their decisions, to impact in the community and the greater community. Thank you.
From my standpoint, I think what was really encouraging was that we were going to be able to measure these usages throughout our entire community, not just the public buildings that we've been working on over the past few years. So this is a way to expand into the entire community in all these different categories, get baseline information with 2009 that's been done, seven?
I think that's what we think.
And then get it for 10 and 11 through ULI, and that'll give us a basis then to start working on some real reduction strategies in all those different categories of usage. So I thought all the presentations were very interesting. I think we're going to get a tremendous bang for the buck through ULI in gathering this data, and I thank you for working hard to put this together, to make this possible. Any other questions? All right.
I would move approval. I would second.
I just was curious if the data we're developing and the framework will be fed into a regional infrastructure framework or a statewide, you know, we're collecting this data well on the local level. Will that go upstream and help for some statewide or region-wide reporting?
Initially, the idea is to do it at a regional level, around the Regional Council of Mayor's area. There's already been some work done in other parts of Minnesota, so I think statewide is very doable, and I do believe it's probably happening in other places in the country, and we just haven't heard about it yet. So I think it'll feed into bigger things as time goes on.
I would move approval. I would second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, we're going to get into the public hearing portion of the agenda. The first public hearing matter we have in front of us is the potential issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Edina Chamber of Commerce for their Taste of Edina event to be held May 12, 2011, and that has happened annually for several years now. Chief, I think, did you have this matter?
Good evening again, Mayor and council. The Edina Chamber of Commerce has applied for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license and special use permit to hold the annual Taste of Edina event, which will be held at the Centennial Lakes Park Centrum Building on May 12 from 4:30 to 7:30. As the mayor indicated, this is an annual event that has had no public safety issues. The applicants are eligible for the liquor license and have submitted plans to meet all of the special requirements. I would recommend that the temporary liquor license include the condition that the sale and consumption of liquor be limited to beer and wine.
Questions for the chief? All right. We have the proponent with us this evening. I see Ari Larson-Manti from the chamber back there. Ari, you want to come forward and talk a little bit about the event? And if you're going to have a wine tasting, it's important to have a temporary license?
Yes, it is. And as the chief indicated, this is a multiple-year event that we've been going on. We've had no instance at it. We certainly welcome the entire community to come and join us. It's a showcase of community and food and wine, which is a large part of our community with over 20 restaurants. Please come and sample it and enjoy the experience. It's great for our business.
Good. Thank you. This is, question?
Actually, not for the proponent. I just was wondering, in the background information, it says they've submitted plans to meet the special requirements for a temporary license. Could you just talk about the special requirements for the public?
Sure. Primarily, they have to provide a security plan, and they have to ensure that the alcohol is contained in the serving area. And they're doing that by gates and kind of a rope system that, and there's a variety of other suggested requirements that they have to, and they've always gone above and beyond that.
Thanks, chief.
All right. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing for public comment or inquiry. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion with regard to this matter?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right. It's removed and seconded, we approve the issuance of the temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Edina Chamber of Commerce for its Taste of Edina event on May 12, 2011, from 4:30 to 7:30 at the Centennial Lakes Hughes Pavilion. Further discussion?
I just have some clarification questions, Ari. If we can let the public know where they can get tickets and whether tickets are available at the door?
They are available at the door as well as...
And use one of the side podiums, please.
They are available on Edina Chamber's website, which is edinachamber.com, at any Edina liquor store location, as well as at the door.
Great. And it's from 4:30 to 7:30 on May 12?
Yes, it is, and we hope you can join us.
Centennial Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for my permit.
Thank you. Further comment? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Next public hearing matter is a new on-sale and Sunday sale intoxicating liquor license that's been requested by Ruby Tuesday due to a change in ownership. And Deb Megan has this matter, or clerk.
Yes, Mayor, council members. Previously, this was a franchisee owned by Jerry Ruda. He, Mr. Ruda, has sold the franchisee back to Ruby Tuesdays, so it constitutes a new license for us because it's new, a new corporation is now owning it. They've complied with all of our licensing requirements as far as documentation. Sergeant Draper ran a background check. There's no reason to not issue the license, so they're placed before you for your consideration.
All right. Good. Questions for our clerk? This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify or comment regarding this matter? Any inquiries regarding this matter? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Removed and seconded, we close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of issuing a new on-sale and Sunday sale intoxicating liquor license to Ruby Tuesday, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next public hearing matter is the potential issuance of a conditional use permit to Jeff Miller and Connie Carino for some work that they want to do at their home. Actually, they want to tear the existing house down at 4509 Garrison Lane, and it requires the issuance of a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. This is one of our new ordinances that was approved in the last few months, so this is our first application to it. This property is located at 4509 Garrison Lane. It's just north of the crosstown, west of France Avenue. It's located on Nancy Lake, adjacent to a 100-year flood elevation per the city's stormwater management plan. That's the area that's highlighted in red. This is a map from our stormwater management plan that indicates, again, that this is in the 100-year flood elevation. Again, what the applicant would like to do is tear down the existing single-family home, the home located in the middle, and construct a new Rambler-style single-family home. The request, again, requires a conditional use permit that would allow a new first-floor elevation of the new home to be greater than one foot above the existing first-floor elevation. 2.4 feet above is what's actually proposed here. What first got them in the door to actually request the conditional use permit is that this property, again, is located in a 100-year floodplain elevation of Nancy Lake. The applicant would like to raise the first-floor elevation greater than two feet, so they hired a hydrologist or had a hydrologist take a look at it, and that study is included in your packet, and it was their suggestion that it be increased a little bit more to build in some flexibility based on the bounce of Nancy Lake. The existing first-floor elevation is 874.9. They're proposing 877.3. Just to show you some of the key elevations here, the existing low-floor elevation of the existing home, 867.2, proposed 867.8. And again, they would be over two feet above the 100-year floodplain elevation. Primary issue that was considered both by staff and the planning commission is, is this request reasonable for the site? And both staff and planning commission believe that it is, essentially for three reasons. First, the conditions outlined in the requirements for a conditional use permit are met. Specifically, that condition one, that allows them to make this request, property located within a 100-year flood area, they had a licensed hydrologist recommend 2.4 feet above that flood elevation. And the additional condition that the proposed home fits the character of this neighborhood. This is a street perspective of the new home. Again, it's a Rambler style. The front door is raised slightly above what the previous front door, but the top of the roof is just two to six feet taller than the homes on either side. The building height here is 15 feet. Per our code definition for building height, city code would allow 30 feet, so it's well within the requirement, fits in well in the neighborhood. All other minimum code requirements are met in terms of setbacks. And again, because of the 100-year flood elevation, they can't dig down deeper in order to meet that first-floor elevation. Currently, their basement has a seven-foot ceiling. They're proposing eight-foot ceilings, which, again, it's a reasonable use for a new home in Edina. We often see eight, nine-foot ceilings. So in conclusion, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the conditional use permit that's before you, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for Director Teague? Member Bennett?
Director Teague, we did have in the packet a number of pieces of correspondence from neighbors in support of this. There was one piece of correspondence that raised the question of a drainage swell or easement, and I noted, could you please tell me, if you recall, where that request or concern came from and what is proposed to address any neighboring concerns about drainage?
Yeah, the concern came from a neighbor right next door. They just wanted to make sure that with the construction of the new house, that additional water, the drainage, isn't directed to their property. That's one of the conditions of approval, and it's a standard review. When a building permit is made, the engineering department reviews the grading and drainage plans, and they ensure that there's no additional drainage directed to adjacent properties with the new home. So knowing that, the adjacent neighbor seemed satisfied that that will be looked at.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Just to be clear, this was approved, I think unanimously by the planning commission.
Correct.
And it also bears a staff recommendation for issuance of a conditional use permit to allow them to construct this new home.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Stand by, and they'll open this matter up for public hearing. I see Ms. Carino and Mr. Miller here. You may want to take this opportunity to come up and talk about the project. I know you've both been here before when we've been trying to deal with Krumenacher and the effects of the Krumenacher decision from the Supreme Court on the issuance of variances.
Yes.
So I believe you probably remember that you've got three minutes.
Yes.
And go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Okay. Mayor Hovland, members of the city council, as you know from Connie and I's attendance at multiple meetings last year, we intend to have our current house removed that we've lived in for 19 years. And I say removed, we're not going to, not planning on demoing it. We're actually selling it to a house mover to have it recycled, then take care of the rest of the foundation and replace the existing walkout Rambler with another walkout Rambler. Unfortunately, our project has been on hold for nine months now as a result of the Krumenacher ruling of the Supreme Court. This basically put a hold on the variance process here in Edina and municipalities and cities throughout Minnesota. We do thank you for approving the conditional use permit ordinance late last December. That allowed us to have this opportunity tonight to ask for your approval for our plan. As Director Teague noted, we did hire a hydrologist, and he did confirm our assertions that because of the pond in our backyard, that our property was susceptible to water intrusion during periods of above-average rainfall. So with a report from the hydrologist, we submitted the CUP application to the planning department. Director Teague presented that this evening, and as was mentioned in late March, the planning commission unanimously recommended our plan for approval. We have the support of neighbors on Garrison Lane, surrounding neighborhoods of St. John, Nancy Lane... Nancy Lane, Rose Court, Ashcroft. You've received copies of many letters of support. We've actually had neighbors phone us and, and stop by because they saw this big six-foot CUP sign in our front yard and stopped to give us their support. Our plans have been submitted to the planning department. Again, it shows replacing our current walkout Rambler with another walkout Rambler with modest nine-foot ceilings on the main floor. We're also planning on having a, a rather low roof of a 412 pitch to make it blend in with the neighbor, the character of the neighborhood. As Director Teague mentioned, we are requesting to go 1.4 foot above the current one-foot increase restriction for tear downs. And he went kind of through the math on that. Again, we're going with what we believe is modest eight-foot ceilings in the lower level. Previously, we mentioned the planning commission meeting that our builder has built about 1,000 houses over the last decade, haven't built any with seven-foot lower levels. About 30% of them were eight-foot, and about 70% of them were nine-foot, so we believe going with eight-foot is, is very reasonable. So we request your approval so that Connie and I can proceed with building our, our new home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for Mr. Miller at this time? All right. Member Swenson?
They're not.
Okay.
But the, the blue hair on his back.
Okay, thank you.
And the coyote, yes.
Oh, you can stick around. We're going to have a coyote conversation later on. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter, please come forward, and you probably recall Ms. Benarot saying, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Member Horton, 6309 St. John's. I think it might be redundant what I'm going to say, but I just have to say that we share shoreline on beautiful Nancy Lake with Jeff and Connie. We can see their backyard, their beautifully landscaped backyard, their wonderful house that needs replacing. They have lots of problems. They could go the way of a mega house, but they don't want to. I can see every house on the lake, and this will complement every house on the lake. I have been, we've been privileged to be in on this from the beginning, and the biggest concern that both Connie and Jeff have had, that it would be complimentary to the neighborhood and that would not infringe on anybody's view or right. That's the kind of people they are. They're, as the small town I grew up in, they're good people, and I hope that you will approve of this because it's the right thing. Thank you, council, for working so hard for us. We've been in Edina for well over 50 years, and I've attended many of these meetings, and we appreciate you. But do vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Horton. Anyone else? All right. I don't see anyone else coming forward. No one else responding to my inquiry. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Is there a motion? Member Swenson?
I'd like to make a motion, and I'd also like to commend the couple who worked through a really long process with us, frustrating it was for them many times, and, you know. So this is the product of it. It's a good product, and I'm thrilled that you're going to be able to start, so I move approval.
I will second, and I will congratulate you on a beautiful design and, and a, and a beautiful intention with the home that you have now. Good luck.
Good. Any other comments?
A quick one to say thank you, because it's, it's a huge investment in improving of your property and your neighborhood and the city, so thank you.
I just want to echo Member Swenson's comments about sticking with the process and for your patience while we work through the Krumenacher effects, and I know it was frustrating because you have this vision, you want to see it come to fruition. So thank you for being good citizens and being patient with us as we work our way through that.
All right. Do we need a roll call on this? I don't think so. All right, all those in favor of issuing the conditional use permit to Jeff Miller and Connie Carino at 4509 Garrison Lane, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you very much, and I echo the comments of my colleagues, and I want to thank you for the participation that, that you rendered in, in, in the process of trying to come up with this concept of conditional use, conditional use permit, all the way through to the planning commission as well as in front of the council. Very helpful. I only had one other question, that was whether, and this isn't too personal, I don't think, but whether the cost of the hydrologist that was estimated actually turned out to be within the range of what the cost was.
The answer to that question is yes and no. The, basically, the, what we ended up paying was within that range, but only because we didn't have to have holes drilled in the backyard. If we would have had to go to that step, then it would have been quite, probably about three times as much as what was quoted previously. So because the hydrologist was able to locate the, the plan, the water resource management plan, and Nancy Lake was on that, we didn't have to drill the holes in the backyard. If we would have had to do that, it, it would have been about three times the, the price that was discussed at the meeting here in December.
All right. Good, that's good to know. Thank you. All right. You don't want to wallpaper the lower level in all of your legal papers?
I don't know, maybe you should all sign it, and we'll put a big picture in our little house.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public hearing matter we have in front of us is the proposed amendment of ordinance 2011-05, amending section 850, which is a sideyard setback exception for properties designated within the heritage landmark district. And Director Teague, I believe you have this matter.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a recommendation that comes to us from the planning commission and the Heritage Preservation Board as part of the planning commission's work on the zoning ordinance amendment. The initial concern was raised from the Heritage Preservation Board regarding a lack of colonial-style homes that were being built because of the city's sideyard setback requirement that requires that homes that exceed 15 feet in height have to be, the setback has to increase six inches for every foot over 15 feet. Colonial-style homes make up 40% of the, of the Country Club District, and we're just not seeing many colonials built back, and the thought being is that that provision is what's preventing people from building colonial-style homes on 50-foot-wide lots. So the ordinance before you exempts properties that have heritage landmark designations on the city's zoning map from that setback requirement. Those areas that are designated heritage landmark designation would be the entire Country Club District, and then there are three scattered sites throughout the city. One is the Baird House, the other is the Peterson House on Interlochen, and the third is the Grimes House on Sunnyside. So this ordinance would apply to those lots as well. The ordinance, one change that was suggested by the Heritage Preservation Board was anybody that is to use this exemption from the setback requirement has to go before the Heritage Preservation Board for a certificate of appropriateness. The thought was, because if an addition is built to the back of the house, those don't always require a certificate of appropriateness. But with this ordinance, anybody who was building an addition or a teardown rebuild would have to go before the Heritage Preservation Board. So with that, the, the planning commission and the Heritage Board are both recommending that the council adopt this ordinance. And I'll turn it back to the council for questions.
Member Bennett? Well, Member Swenson?
Is the style colonial defined succinctly enough that it could potentially be limited only to when a proposal is to tear down and rebuild a colonial?
I, I, I don't believe that there's a specific definition.
I mean, if our goal is to allow for a complete rebuild, and most likely it's going to be complete, you wouldn't take a tutor and decide you're going to make it a colonial. And we've had, you know, our tear downs, what have we had there? Six, seven, eight? And since maybe we changed the rule? So if we, out of those six, seven, or eight, we've never had a colonial built, could you, is there any way to modify this so that it doesn't pertain, this change, to anything other than the desire to tear down and rebuild a house that looks like a colonial that would fit in? I mean, it would tighten it up in a way that maybe would be easier than worrying about...
Yeah, I would think we could, we could take a shot at that.
Because we've gotten a number of letters about the concern, does this open up the area for getting houses again that are going to be too close together? And I get that, but to me, if our goal is to allow colonials to be rebuilt in an area that historically has had colonials, then just limit it to the rebuild, total rebuild of a colonial?
And so if someone were to, yeah, we would only apply to...
I mean, the only time they can come and ask you for this special dispensation, as I might call it, is if they're tearing, if they have permission to tear down a house and their intent is to rebuild a colonial on that lot, that then they could ask for that approval, and it would still have to go through a certificate of appropriateness and all the other stuff.
Yeah, I think we could, we could draft some language.
Just a question, I didn't, I haven't had a chance to ask that yet, so, okay. That's all I had.
Member Bennett?
I think another concern raised was whether or not was the applicability of this to remodeling as well as tear downs, and I don't see language in what's currently in front of us that would limit it only to tear downs. I also am questioned with the bungalow study that was just completed and the eligibility of, I guess, more than 75 properties for heritage designation. Is it possible that those 75 properties that are not in the Country Club neighborhood would then also become eligible for exemption from the sideyard setbacks? And then a follow-up to Member Swenson's question is that I know of at least one, I know of two colonials that have been rebuilt on Wooddale Avenue. One, I think, before the change, the revision of the certificate of appropriateness, but one since, one very recently. It was a smaller colonial that was torn down and replaced with a, a much larger colonial, but on, on a lot in the district. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of concerned as to what it would apply to, what it would not apply to, and would like to see at least some language clarifying that.
Yeah, the, the ordinance before you would apply to, if somebody just wanted to build an addition off the back, they could utilize this exception. They would be required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness to do that. And then to answer your question about the, the bungalow study and if someone were to, if someone were to opt in and they were designated in Edina Heritage Landmark, this would apply to them, if they're designated as such on our zoning map.
Sort of create a conflict between heritage designation and our zoning code because the zoning code would then encourage something that the heritage designation was, if you're going to tear down a bungalow and put up a colonial, that would seem to be a direction that we don't want to be going or encouraging people to go. Oh, one additional question, and that is that I understand that the Heritage Preservation Board has consistently, first of all, isn't there a charge to deal with changes to the facade, the street-facing facade of a home? So then if there's a remodeling project that's going to occur at the rear of the home, but it's going to ask for this exemption, would it not then ask, be asking the Heritage Preservation Board to take a role in a project that they would not otherwise or previously have had a role in?
That's correct, and that was their concern. That's why we added the language that states, anybody that utilizes this exemption is required a certificate of appropriateness.
Right, but that, again, that goes to increasing their workload in a way that they have previously asked. They not have their workload increased? Anyway, that's, thank you.
Member Bendel?
So, the language we have in front of us is specifically designed to preserve and encourage colonials.
That was, that's the intent.
Okay. All right. And currently, if someone in Country Club, because I do not live in Country Club, so I actually don't know the rules, but if someone in Country Club wants to remodel or add to the back of their home, do they currently, whether it's colonial or anything else, I'm, that's, I'll put it aside for now, if they're in the district and they want to remodel in the back, do they need to go in front of the Heritage Preservation Board for approval?
They do not.
Okay.
Unless the remodel is a larger percentage.
So, this says, if you have a colonial and you want to build in the back, you need approval?
Correct.
Because, okay, well, I, that's, that's a piece of it that I'm not sure makes sense to me. So, it, I think, as, my recommendation tonight is going to be to take a step back on this because we do have some thinking to do, but if I'm going to add to the back of my home and I'm in a preservation district, a historic district, that I don't have to go and get approval for what I'm doing in the back, but if I have a colonial...
Well, it actually means if you have any, any house that designated as a heritage landmark, you could have a tutor.
Yeah.
And, and under this ordinance change, you now have to go in front of the Heritage Preservation Board.
Only if it's, no, only if you want to not do the setback according to what currently is our citywide ordinance. So if I have a tutor, and this would apply to me?
Only if you're utilizing that exception. If you wanted to build off the back, met the setback, including the stepping in...
I see.
You would not have to go before the...
Okay. So if I need this exception...
Right.
No matter what the style of my home is.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I was getting stuck on the colonial. So I think, I think that might, for me, take some, take some finessing to make sure that it's inclusive so we don't miss, so we don't confuse people to thinking if they don't have a colonial, this wouldn't apply.
Member Bennett?
This creates, for me, the question of variances. Understanding that Krumenacher is the law right now, I understand also that the legislature has been working on remedial legislation for most of this current session. Where do those efforts stand at present?
We're hearing that there may be a final bill by as early as the end of next week. We could have a law next, by the end of next week.
In substantially the same form that you've mentioned earlier, I think the manager did a report one, four is about a month ago...
Right.
On the scope of the bill.
Yes, and also, I, I believe the, the bill that's currently drafted is effective immediately.
Member Swenson?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Member Sprague had something to say.
No, I just was following up on, you know, I'm not sure I'm, I'm for expanding the heritage preservation charge into, you know, off of the facade, and now we're into people's backyards, although, on the other hand, they are taking advantage of this exception. So it's a counterpoint, but I think, you know, you have to allow some flexibility to the homeowner as well.
I'm still wrestling with the language, as Member Bennett was, trying to understand how it applies to remodels, unless you have specific language in there that says, that delineates the scope of it.
That does bear, fits with what Member Swenson was saying originally, which is if you intended to apply... if you intended to apply to just one circumstance, why wouldn't you specify that it applies to just one circumstance instead of making it appear to be general in its application?
However, it is. This is a public hearing, should we, should we take some testament, if there's anyone here? Maybe they'll bring up something that we haven't thought about.
All right. All right, let's open the public hearing, and if there are folks that want to comment or inquire, please come forward.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name's Kitty O'Day, 4610 Bruce Avenue, resident of Country Club. Gosh, I haven't really been here much since 2008, when the plan of treatment was approved. That's a mere two and a half years ago. I just want to comment real quickly on some things Mr. Teague had said originally in his comments. He said that Heritage Board, you know, rarely looks at additions, they never look at additions, it's not part of the plan of treatment. And so one thing that if this does move ahead, I think the plan of treatment would have to be changed to include that authority for them, and I guess I would request that those things go in unison so that there isn't a gap and that someone is overseeing it. Second thing that Mr. Teague said was about the number of homes. On my count, there have been three homes demolished. I'm pretty sure. The one that's just being done on, on Country Club that is being rebuilt, and I don't know so much about what style that one is, the colonial that was torn down on Wooddale, which was being replaced by a colonial, and a contemporary home on Bruce Avenue that was replaced by a Tudor. So by my count, colonials are getting their fair share of the rebuild activity in the neighborhood. And I guess I kind of questioned, is there a problem here? I, I've sat through so many of the Heritage Board meetings, and they, they were very much adamant that they did not want to get into additions. And I know there's been some frustration with some challenges of building on a small lot, but I just don't see the, the issue here. I looked at the background, it first showed up on planning in January. There's been a total of 11 sentences on this, in the Heritage Board meeting notes. It just doesn't seem like it's really been thoroughly vetted, and a lot of these issues haven't been raised. So Jane Longquist sent a note, and I think she raised some really good points. It's too broad as its stated purpose to encourage reconstruction of colonial-style housing within Country Club District. As I've mentioned, they're getting their fair share at this point. I really don't see the issue. What Jane had suggested was that if it's, if that's the objective, to add language that clarifies that the setback only be waived if, one, the construction is of a new home, you know, a teardown of a post-1944 home, and that the new construction be done as a colonial style, I think some of the council members pointed that out. Without those distinctions, distinctions, the change is just an invitation to add more massing to our neighborhood. While lot coverage takes care of the first floor, this height restriction takes care of that second floor, which is massing, and I live next door to a really big house, and so this is very personal to me. It's probably not going to happen to me, but it's very personal to me. Secondly, this knee is just clearly not identified. Colonials have been built, as she said. We're talking about a fairly small number of homes. We're talking about making an exception for 550 homes plus, maybe the cottages, maybe every other thing, for maybe 10 homes, 15 homes? It just seems not, not, not a reasonable thing, will add workload to the Heritage Board. And lastly, we weren't informed. I found out this morning that this was being discussed. There really wasn't enough information in the Heritage Board minutes to really respond to this, and I just would ask that on a decision that's going to affect this many homes and it's specific to a neighborhood, that that trigger better communication with the neighborhood and an opportunity for input. I know more people have been here tonight, more people would have sent you emails, didn't have time. I found out about it at noon. So I'm asking you either table this, defer it, put it aside until this, the zoning issue with the state, the variances at the state get figured out, and decide if this is really a problem that people should be working on. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Good, Dan Dulos, 4609 Bruce Avenue. I want to just reiterate some of, not reiterate, but agree with a lot of things Kitty said this evening. I only found out about this issue this evening on my way home from work, so I may not be as prepared as I would have liked to be, but I have reviewed the proposal, and I, I see too many problems in it, also in the language. I think the issue that the council needs to realize is that the only homes that, teardown homes that this should apply to are homes that are, are non-contributing to the Heritage District. And so if we're trying to add colonials, we're trying to add colonials and where homes that don't contribute are, meaning homes that were built post-1942 or whatever it is. And there's not that many of those homes. So we're opening up a can of worms here, as far as I can tell, because the homes that are turned down, doesn't mean they have to build a colonial, not by this language. And again, we've had colonials. I think the problem is, what this tends to lead to is affecting, in my mind at least, homes in three streets. It's going to be Arden, it's going to be Bruce, and it's going to be Casco, because those are the chief lots, those are where the teardowns are going to happen, and then they're going to have brick walls, and they're tall, going straight up nearby. I would concur that if you currently have a colonial and something happens to it and you want to build another colonial, I think that it is of similar size, that would be acceptable. But I think if you're going to tear down Rambler and now build a two-story colonial that goes straight back, all the way back to the back lot, cutting 30% coverage, it's going to be a pretty big massing issue. And I think that was a lot of the work that we did with the Heritage Board and with the Planning Commission and with you all regarding the Country Club area. I think that this proposal leads to more massing, not less massing in that area, and it's going to mostly affect those three streets, I think, as far as just the blockiness of the homes. I think we've seen Wooddale get colonials and do it, done a fairly nice job there and fit into the neighborhood, but I think if you take the small 50-foot lots and you put big colonials on them, that then don't have any setback or that more colonials in first place, I think you're going to have a lot of problems with passing. So I would like to see a little bit more vetting of this, I would like to see a little more neighborhood input and more understanding of what brings us to this point for what should be only a few homes. The additions is a whole nother issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dulos. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Council comments. Member Swenson.
I guess I can't support this in its current status. I think it opens up too many cans of worms. I don't like it going into, outside of the Country Club area where we're not trying to support colonials into anything we've designated as historical. I think the point of the two different sides of the Country Club area is, is pretty accurate as to which lots can safely have a colonial on it and which can't. It's not that I want to kill building colonials in Country Club, but I just think this is way too broad. Maybe we should wait until after the legislature changes their roles.
Sure, so you would, yeah, you would be comfortable tabling it until after we see what the legislature does?
I would.
Member Sprague.
I would concur with that. I definitely don't want to over-expand the, the circumstances, and I don't want to go into additions and get the Heritage Preservation Board into a purpose that's not within their current mission.
Thank you. Member Bennett or Member Bindel?
Go ahead, I'll go next.
I think that some very good work was done by the Heritage Preservation Board in revising the plan of treatment, and I think that we've seen good results from that in the last couple of years, and I would also prefer to table this, see what the legislature does, and we can revisit if necessary.
Thank you. Member Bindel.
I think the part of the discussion that I had tonight that is illuminating to me is what this applies to and what it doesn't. And just your verbal discussion tonight told me a lot about something I hadn't understood yet about what it applies to. So I, I would like to better understand that as well. So, thank you.
And you're comfortable with tabling it?
I am.
All right. I, I thought our residents, Ms. O'Day and Mr. Dulos, raised some really interesting issues in addition to the issues that were raised up here on the dais. Ms. O'Day, you know, is this a solution in search of a problem? That notion, and Mr. Dulos, there might be some unintended consequences that flow from this that we need to be careful about. So I, too, would be most comfortable if we wait and see what the legislature does with this variance process. I don't think we're in the business of necessarily pushing a certain type of housing. That district has functioned pretty well over there with the, with the regulations that we have in place in the plan of treatment. We've refined it over time. We have had some hiccups along the way, but we've got a pretty good process in place right now. So I'd be in favor of tabling it. I would, I would entertain a motion to table this matter until such time as we hear from the legislature on any law passed dealing with variances.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Carried. Next public hearing deals with potentially establishing the Planning Commission as the Board of Appeals. Mr. Teague has this one as well. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This comes as a result of our work session that we had with the Planning Commission back in March, March 15th, and this simply establishes the Planning Commission as the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as we talked about, it looks as though the crew manacher issue will be settled. So with that, the Planning Commission will have to take up, should the council approve this tonight, we'll have to start meeting twice a month. We're going to be having a discussion at our next Planning Commission meeting, should this be passed again, in terms of what meeting dates that, that might take place. So with that, the ordinance before you is simply establishing our Planning Commission as our Zoning Board of Appeals.
Member Swenson.
I know when we talked that evening in the work session, we discussed, would it be the complete Planning Commission that would do it or just a percentage of it? Are you, and this, to me, says it's the complete Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for Director Teague?
I do.
Member, Member Bindel.
So the original proposal comes in front of the Planning Commission, and the proposal for variances goes in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is it awkward that both of those things are going to be reviewed by the same panel?
I don't believe so. The, the Planning Commission is the Zoning Board of Appeals. So anytime the Planning Commission is meeting, similar to the council and the HRA, the zoning board, the, the Planning Commission is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And that's currently? Do, no, we have two?
No, currently, we have a separate Zoning Board of Appeals, we have rotating members.
Right, right, exactly. And that's what I'm wondering, is it, is it awkward that the same people would hear that proposal and hear both?
I think...
Would be making two decisions on the same proposal?
No, it, the, are you thinking like if there's a commercial development with a variance attached to it?
Yeah, exactly.
They would just be making a final decision on the variance, but as the code requires those decisions, it's not a final decision, those decisions are automatically appealed to the city council. So if they're reviewing a variance that's tied to a conditional use permit or a site plan review, they're essentially making a recommendation on that variance that the council would ultimately approve.
Okay, all right.
Or deny.
I just wondered if that would be awkward.
Member Sprague.
Mr. Teague, when, when does the timing issue get resolved in terms of how they're going to execute this? You know, whether they meet at 5:30 the night of the regular Planning Commission meeting or, or meet at the same time or potentially early at 6:30 as, as it is in this report? When does that issue get resolved?
Yeah, we'll be having that discussion again next week. Some of our preliminary discussions, we've talked about meeting at 5:30, taking care of residential variances at that time, and then meeting again at 7 o'clock as part of the, the regular Planning Commission meeting. But those things will, we still need to iron out. That's nothing that needs to be put into, it doesn't need to be codified, that's just a decision, timing when we decide to meet.
Anything else?
No, thanks.
All right. Member Bennett.
I, my only, I hope on that, understanding that, I, I agree, that I don't, I don't think it needs to be codified, but given the value of consistency in scheduling, whatever the Planning Commission does arrive at as a schedule, I think it would be good to stay with something so that awareness and expectancy are met.
I have one question for you, Director Teague, and it may be covered somewhere else in the proposed modification, but on page four, under paragraph H, there was a strike-through on the appeal, the time for appeal. Maybe that was a legal change that the, our attorney made, but the old language required that we hear an appeal not more than 60 days after the date of appeal is filed.
Right, that was a catch from our city attorney. It was language that we should have taken out as part of our last amendment to this overall section. This is covered in the 60-day rule, where the city has 60 days to take final action on a project. So we're just cleaning up some of that language.
All right, good, thank you. Anything else for Director Teague? This is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to inquire or comment regarding this proposed amendment, amendment to section 50 of, 850 of the code? Seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass ordinance 2011-06, amending section 850, establishing the Planning Commission as the Zoning Board of Appeals. Further discussion? Member Bennett.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I would just like to state that I, my only concern about this is the loss of the able service of the people who've served on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think they're bright and willing volunteers in our community, and I know that we will be losing their service by turning the functions of the Zoning Board over to the Planning Commission. But I do understand the, the desire for consistency and simplicity, and so we'll support this.
Thank you. Mayor, does the motion include waiving second hearing, second reading? Who made the motion?
I did, and I wouldn't be comfortable with that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Bindel?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. All right, very good. Some good work done there on the public hearing portion of the agenda. We are moving beyond award-of-bid change orders, there's nothing worse to cover there. Everything was handled by consent, and then, in due reports and recommendations, 4A is the first matter before us, and that is our first experience with sketch plan review. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There are two parts to the council consideration this evening. The first is a sketch plan review at 4528 and 4530 France Avenue. Again, this is the first sketch plan review that we've had since the, the new ordinance change, so we're breaking new ground here. The purpose is for the council to discuss, review, and provide informal comment on the sketch plan. Any comments should all be considered advisory and does not constitute any binding decision on the request. The second part deals with a provision in our comprehensive plan, and this area is designated as a potential area of change within the comprehensive plan. The plan states that a development proposal that involves a comprehensive plan amendment or rezoning within these areas will require a small area plan prior to... or rezoning within these areas will require a small area plan prior to planning application. However, the authority to initiate a small area plan rests with the city council. So the proposal that we're, we'll be looking at here does require some type of a rezoning in order to accommodate the request. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to a PUD in this instance. So the council is asked to determine if a small area study should be done prior to the rezoning. As part of the planning commission review of this at the planning commission meeting here a couple of weeks ago, the planning commission recognized the importance of the small area plan. They're, as we know, they're currently undertaking the, the Grand View Plan, and that's going to take up to a year to complete. So they recognize that it's difficult to do two of these at one time. They also recognize that there's not a specific definition of a small area plan, that each of these areas can be done somewhat differently. At a minimum, they felt that some type of a sketch plan review should be presented to the neighborhood in some type of a, a neighborhood setting. They felt that it's difficult to put all development on hold within these, within these areas in order for a small area plan to be completed within each of these areas. So getting back to the sketch plan proposal, the, the graphic on the screen indicates the two properties that we're looking at. The property designated as PCD IV, which is the current zoning designation for the, the Rapid Oil Building Site, the uses that are allowed there would be car washes, gas station, automobile repair. The second site is zone PCD I. It's a building that was built by Mr. Noonan back in 2000. That was rezoned from, at that time it was zoned R1, and it was rezoned to PCD II to accommodate that new office building. What he's proposing to do is tear down the existing, what was the Rapid Oil Change Building. You can see it here in the background, this is the existing building that was built back in 2000. He would like to build a building that would match this existing building. So what's on the screen here, this is the existing building, the new building would match. Here's a look from the rear of what the building would look like, and then from the front, you know, the bird's eye view from, from France Avenue. Again, the applicant would like to rezone this to PUD. In rezoning to PUD, there wouldn't be any variances needed, the, it would be written right into the PUD whatever the, the standards are for the site in terms of height, setback, parking requirements, et cetera. The, the zoning ordinance however suggests that we start with the underlying zoning in terms of setback requirements. So I included in your packet, in the planning, planning commission staff report, the standards that aren't met with the underlying zoning. That includes along the south lot line, the, the building would have a two-foot setback, a 30-foot setback would be required based on the height of the building. The parking lot itself in the front would have a zero setback, there would be no green space to, would essentially match the existing site. Also, a five-foot setback is required, is requested to the, the south lot line. Also, the code requires screening from R1 residential properties, and there would be no screening as that back, the, the building would be two feet from that back lot line. Again, the, the, oh, and also the, the building is, is short parked, I should mention, the parking. Based on the square footage of the building, if it were all retail, 74 stalls would be required. If it were all office, which is actually what the, what the applicant is suggesting here, 53 spaces would be required. So it's just slightly, would be underparked.
Sixty, you mean? Sixty spaces would be required.
Sixty spaces would be, would be required, and 53 is what's proposed here. Some of the additional comments in regard to the site plan from the, the planning commission, they felt that the proposed use is preferable to the existing, or what was the Rapid Oil Change or any use that would be allowed in the PCD IV zoning district. They felt that the direction of the comprehensive plan was for walkability and creating, maintaining streetscapes. They didn't, they felt that the proposed parking in front didn't match the character of the 44th and France area. They recognized the, the high quality of work that Mr. Noonan does, his buildings that he's built within town speak for themselves, he's always done a, a very nice job. One of the suggestions they had was to possibly move the building up front and have the parking in back, and I believe Mr. Noonan will respond to that, that request as well. So in conclusion, the council is asked to determine if a small area plan here should be done prior to any consideration of rezoning, and second, to provide comments on the, the sketch plan. And I can stand for any questions, or Mr. Noonan is here with his architect to make a presentation also.
Member Bennett?
Mr. Teague, in the center schematic or representation, can you identify the building on the upper left for us?
Uh, right here?
Yes.
That is the, the strip mall in the city of Minneapolis?
Right, and, and that has a lot-
That does have parking in front.
Between the street and the, thank you.
Correct.
All right, any other questions for Director Teague, otherwise we'll bring Mr. Noonan up with his architect to discuss the proposal. Members, break.
Mayor, I do. On the, the potential area of change, can you describe, you know, it's hard to see two on the map and what, what exact streets are encompassed, can you, can you describe that more in detail?
Yeah, there weren't specific plans drawn, this was, this was what was done in the comprehensive plan. They essentially, I think the intent was to draw a circle around the entire commercial area in 44th and France.
Okay.
I think the, as we've done with the Grand View, kind of determined the specific boundaries as we've gone, as we've gone through that process. I would see something similar here if we did a, a district-wide small area plan here.
Also, in terms of sketch plan, the neighborhood meeting suggested under sketch plan, is staff working on any, any guidelines or, or anything to help somebody understand what that neighborhood meeting might, might look like, or how many people that might encompass? And any, any guidance at all from staff been suggested?
We really haven't. We thought we would have the discussion this evening. We thought, thinking at a minimum, invite people within a thousand square feet, or a thousand feet of the entire district, that, that's our rezoning notification area. I would think that would be a starting point for inviting people to a, some type of a neighborhood sketch plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point in time for Director Teague? All right, let's bring Mr. Noonan up along the, with his architect, Mr. Newland, I assume?
Good evening, Mayor. Council, Ed Noonan, 84 Woodland Circle, and Scott Newland, the architect that designed the initial building that's there at 4528 France Avenue South.
What have you got with you, Mr. Noonan?
Just copies of what was shown on the screen there, larger, colorful ones, if that'd be, help clarify some issues. It doesn't show the comprehensive plan area at all any better, but-
All right, Mr. Newland, but let's, let's just take on some of those issues that were raised in the planning commission that you talked about in your letter of April 14th.
Scott.
You know, pulling the building up closer to France is a good place to start. Why not do that and put parking in the rear, I guess was one of the questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm Scott Newland, 5217 James Avenue South, Minneapolis. To answer the question about the position of the proposed addition relative to the street and the context that we're in, we, we did take a look at that, however, there's a number of factors that lead us to say that that doesn't make any sense. Part of that is because although I'm sympathetic to the planning commission's desire to pull buildings forward to reinforce the streetscape, in this case, we have an existing condition in that at the 4528 France Project, we have an existing parking garage which is not visible from France Avenue, it's down one floor. That's existing, that is actually part of the parking calculation, it's the interior of that. To build a new addition on top of it makes tremendous sense because we have a supporting structure, there's the economies of scale, there's the fact that the cars are kept on the parking, on the France Avenue side and not parking on the roof of the building. Because if we were to flip the building forward and park on the roof of the parking garage, that would mean that all the cars that are circulating, especially in the evening, are, the headlights are flashing in the vicinity of the R1 district. We're building new foundations and a completely new foundation, um, structure for the new addition. There's inefficient circulations, it doesn't marry with the existing parking that's in front of the 4828 building. There's several reasons not to do that. I, I support the idea of building commercial development closer to the street to reinforce that whole fabric of the commercial district. It just, does not make sense in this context, given the amount of parking that we would lose, the inefficiency of the circulation, and other factors.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Newland? Member Brindle?
I have a couple bullets that I've marked here, and I appreciate your letting us try out the sketch plan review on this. This is great. And, and the sketch plan you've provided is in some detail, so it does let us really look at what some of your plans are and what we can suggest. And the, the number one thing that stands out for me, and certainly the quality of what you do, I mean, that's, that's notwithstanding because your buildings are beautiful, as are your homes. But there's a lot of hardscape here, and the, the, the flat roof of the building as well as the pave of the parking lot is the great percentage of what is, what is on this piece of property. And one of my comments was to try and do something in the back to, to screen the back of the building from the homes to, to quiet some of the commotion that might come in the evening, and, and I know there's not a lot of room back there, but, but looking at the parking lot area, and there's a sidewalk right along the street, and I see in a couple of different areas, if you have this board, it might be handy to put it up. Yes, the one in your left hand, yes, and I'm looking at the bottommost picture. Okay, that's good. That is the picture I'm looking at. There are three driveways, there are three access points to the parking lot, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I would like to see a little more separation between the movements of the cars and people on the sidewalk, if it's possible. Now, I see two barriers. Am I seeing two barriers there?
The barrier existing here?
Yes.
That exists right now because of the topography, the change of the grade there from drainage to the public sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
There's a transition point there, yes.
All right.
Sure.
And, and then it, going to your, to the left of it, there's a green standard sticking up, and it looks like there, it may be a, a little hedge, or?
Landscaping there, correct. I'm sorry. Landscaping there, correct.
Okay. And, all right, so if, if we see the white car, the white car that's sitting at that middle, okay, but the, the white car that's on the street-
Okay.
That's at the middle driveway, those cars are going to back out, and I'm, I'm just looking at movements, trying to separate car movements from pedestrians because they're close together. They're quite close together, and if there is a way, and I know that you're trying to find a parking place everywhere you can because you need them, but if it's possible to, I don't know, open up a little island to get a little more green space in there so that the water has a place to go rather than streaming off into, some of it anyway, into the stormwater basin, that's, that's the number one thing that, that struck me, and I know you're looking at a small piece of property and trying to do a lot with it, and I certainly appreciate that.
Sure. And just to clarify, existing, there's four curb cuts to the county road, and we closed one of those down here to three-
Okay.
To try to improve the condition.
Great.
And yes, you are correct that we are trying to increase parking count there. You know, we see what's happening at 50th and France with the new restaurants and things there, we see what parking is like, and we know we can't carry the whole burden of the office space here, but we felt with the additional parking that is available across the street here along the curb that we would come very close, which not a lot of properties in that area have even come that close to. We tried to, as Scott said, hold it back here in reference to the bit, property across the street. You know, we got the comprehensive plan here in Edina, but remember, 75 feet across the street, we have the city of Minneapolis that doesn't have the same guidelines.
Right.
So I just want us to keep that in mind and respect that also.
Yep.
We tried to blend it in, and this discussion about parking too came up back 10 years ago when this building was proposed here, and we were encouraged for parking in the front at that time also.
Okay.
So it is a, a challenging site here. You've got a home to the south here that's now being used as office. We've got the contaminated site next to us on the north side, the dry cleaner site there, that, it's, it's a very difficult property here. What led me down this course of path here is, one, if we could remove the oil change building there, we felt that that was a eyesore to that neighborhood. In fact, as we took ownership of it, within 30 days, I had three or four neighbors calling me and saying, when will you pull down the red bullseyes? I guess I missed the two in the back of the building, I got the ones on the front, and please change color of it so we don't think it's a Rapid Oil Change anymore. So that's what we did there, just to buy us some time on it here. I also have a current tenant in the building here that's been with me five years that would like to extend, that will need some growth capacity there for square footage, and so they would like to look at expanding on that same site if possible.
And your, and your design allows for that expansion?
Correct.
Okay. I have one last question, just in case it doesn't go out of my mind, there it is. Would the parking places here be available for public parking when it's not office hours?
Well, currently, if you drive by there after hours, both sites are used, almost full at all times by the, I think the restaurants across the street here, the nail salons and-
Right.
The chatterbox. So we haven't restricted that at all.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like not to, I think the most restriction I do is catching the skateboarders or greasing the steps and trying to chase them off, the cars haven't been a problem at this point yet.
Well, thank you for that. That's wonderful.
No, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all your great comments too. We try to do a nice job in the community. I live in a community, I've always said to my children, if you can do business and live in the same community with your head held high, you know, that's what you should strive for. And it is my name on everything we do here, creative architects like Scott supporting us here and giving us a great stage to perform on here. And this is a difficult site here, you know, I don't know what else could be done with it here unless we look at a very massive, you know, buying up many properties here. We felt in the back of the building here, if you wanted to come out onto the flat roof of me sometime, I'd welcome you out there to see the foliage and vegetation, the height of it back there, and it really does provide a nice screening. Plus, I feel the homes on 44th are deep lots back there, and with some accessory buildings back here, it does screen pretty well. Currently, the back of the one-story parking garage, if you were to walk back there, it's a concrete cinder block building with old steel window frame, single pane glass, and has mesh bolted across the top of it. It's how we acquired the building back 12 years ago from the Gold family that owned it from Edina here, Richard Gold, who had the gay 90s and the Moby Dick's and places like that, and did some of his antique car storing and restoration there, plus some after-hour meetings and staff development meetings there.
Member Swenson?
You know, I served on planning when you originally came in front for the first building you did, and that was going to be your office, and you were going to park your vehicles down below, and that's why it made sense to you to buy it. You got it built, and all of a sudden you were in front of us again because your office was now going to be at 54th and France, and you made this retail. While I understand that your intent right now is to make it office, it could be retail again too, and it could be underparked, and I'm not comfortable with what this does from a streetscape. I'm not as concerned about having cars behind with headlights because if it's truly office, it's, there aren't people coming and going in, in the evening unless you've made it something else. So I don't particularly like this plan, I don't like the way it sets back. You do great buildings, you do wonderful buildings. So it's not that you don't make a great building, I just don't particularly like this way it comes to the street and what it could do potentially with parking.
I respect that, Anne. We do go back many years with you on the planning commission here. If you remember, or maybe just refresh some other members' memory here, is- If you remember, or maybe just refresh some other members' memory here, is we were very content over by Jerry's on the Eden Circle.
And we removed you from that area.
Yes.
And I go back to that history, too.
So I was struggling quickly to find a spot. I tried to secure 54th and France down to 60 days before I had to vacate the Eden Circle, and I couldn't get that under contract. This I could, so we're trying to make do with this site here.
And it's worked, you know, for what, you know, you had the rug store there for a while, and now you have a business there for a while, and to me, as I drive by, it's worked fine, and there aren't cars that are parked on the street that are needing that particular building. You're just taking that square footage, though, and intensifying it quite a bit. And, you know, where Rapid Oil right now is about the same frontage as your existing building that you did. We're now moving back, and as Mary said, we're getting a lot of roof and a lot of parking lot. And I guess, for me, I don't need to do a small-area plan to talk to you about what you need to do there, I just don't particularly like this plan. Okay?
And I would agree, too. If we were to come in and say we want coffee shops and restaurants, I think that would be a terrible burden on that site there. I'm not asking for that.
No, I know you are.
We're in the very early stages here, so I do appreciate your input.
I know you are. So I'm just kind of telling you where I am.
And if I may just turn it back to you, is what would you do, being on the planning commission this many years, with a site like this here? Put Rapid Oil back into it, or auto mechanic repair shop?
Yeah.
I'm just looking for ideas there.
No, I completely agree that neither of those uses is particularly attractive, nor do I think it's really needed at this site. I would just rather have the frontage of the building maintained through the rest of the new part of the site, and if you have to park behind, you park behind on top of your garage.
How do you think that would be received by the neighborhood?
I don't know, that's why I'm kind of curious, so it's a new experience. But the other part I want you to know is, I don't think we have to do a small-area plan to help you do, to develop this site either. So I want to tell you that, I'm not a stickler on that for this, but you asked me how I felt about this.
Sure, no, and I appreciate it. I thought about parking, we were, Scott and I studied it, we thought light standards back there, trying to screen the headlights and that, the noise of the cars starting and that, we thought that would be more intrusive than...
And it might be. I might get a lesson from my neighbors back there that I didn't expect, has happened before, so...
Well, I do appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Member Bennett?
This is my neighborhood, and one of the first things I became, one of the first city issues I became involved in was a redevelopment plan that was for the whole area that the neighborhood absolutely hated. I've got two things that I'd like to put up, if it's okay, if we can... The bigger plan was a very old plan, dated from the 1980s, there were houses being removed, turned into parking lots, there was a, I think it might have been a 20,000-square-foot office building, I forget the exact square footage, but it was really a pretty massive change. And there were two, if we can look at the color, the bright color, well, this is a good place to start. The Heritage Preservation Board did a survey, looking at both a question of massing and preservation of homes, but also, there was a question that was included in the survey, on what kind of change do you want to see at 44th and France? And 51%, there was a good rate of response, 297 surveys were returned out of 675. And 51% of the people said no change, and 43% said minor change. And to me, what you're proposing is more in that minor change category. I think it's a use that's already existing in the neighborhood, it's half of a building that's already existing in the neighborhood, it's a floor on top of a parking structure that's already in the neighborhood. There is, there are buildings that come to the street, but there are also buildings that don't. And the area as a whole does span France Avenue with two comprehensive plans and two set of zoning requirements, and two, and varying characteristics all over. We've, the Dur Building is a good example of a building itself that pulls up to the corner at 44th and France, but its parking lot to the side is also pulled up to the street. And we see the same thing in the building that's to the east of Sunnyside Gardens on 44th Street, on the Minneapolis side. The second thing, Member Sprague had a question about what does the potential area of change involve? And it's my understanding from the key that the blue at the bottom is townhouses, the blue at the top, in the right-hand corner, is a condominium building. So it's only the other colors that are commercial buildings. And I think when you talk with the neighborhood about change, the idea that a commercial building would remain a commercial building, or that this office retail use would exist, I think people are pretty comfortable with that. What they really didn't like, at least in 2004, when that survey was done, was the idea of radical, radical change. So I don't think a small-area plan is needed here either. I think the fact that you are willing to work with a neighborhood process is fabulous. The Neighborhood Association, which formed in 2003, has an email list of, I believe, over 300 addresses for the 700 homes in the area. It may be more extensive than that, I'm not on that steering committee, haven't been since I was elected to this body, but they would be happy to connect you electronically with residents throughout the neighborhood, in addition to any mailed notice that might be sent. And I am sure that you would turn out people eager to hear about your plans.
Member Sprague?
I kind of straddle the middle here. I'm all for economic development and bringing more vibrancy into the area, and I want to applaud you for taking a shot at a very difficult lot. But I would also like to see another option that follows the prerogatives of our comprehensive plan. And there's not, that option's not on the table, and that's something I think that would be worth looking at and considering as we go forward. So I kind of straddle the middle on this one. And I, the exterior of the building, actually, I'm looking at the live shot of the existing building, is very, is a huge step forward for that site, obviously. It still looks underparked to me, and it looks like there's not a lot of separation between that pedestrian sidewalk and the parking lot, and not a lot of green space. Maybe there's a way to tweak the site plan to accomplish a little softening of the look from the street. So between that and maybe seeing another option, I think that would allow me to make a more informed choice.
All right. Excuse me. Well, first of all, I think we should all celebrate the demise of the Rapid Oil Change. I think, as I drive by that neighborhood, you know, many times a month, I look over at that old Rapid Oil change and think, "Oh, I wish that thing was gone." You did a great job with that other building, maintaining the character, maybe I should compliment you, too, Mr. Noonan. Mr. Noonan is always context-sensitive, and when we approved that building that you designed initially, it was a great addition to that 44th and France area. This, I see, is just an extension of that. Do I wish it could be pulled up to the curb? Yeah, I can see why that would be a great idea, and why you're sensitive to that as an architect, but you can't do that all the time, and I can understand why you can't do it here. I know if you could landscape it a little bit better, you would, in fact, I think you'll make an effort at that. I know you've won awards for your landscaping down at 54th and France, and you did a terrific job over at Valley View in Wooddale on that old Clancy's building that was so tired. It's just, it's enhanced that neighborhood corner just tremendously, since you did all that work down there. So I don't have any doubt about the quality of work that you would do. On my wish list would be the ability to park behind it, would be better landscaping, would be better pedestrian amenities. I think you can try to hammer on some of those things to the extent possible, but I understand the constraints of the site. At the end of the day, I'm pretty comfortable with this. I think we get misled a little bit on the hardscape by, because of the angle we're looking at the building from. You know, we're looking at the roof and the parking lot. If we were looking at it from the street level, I think we'd have a far different opinion. You know, I don't drive by there now and think, "Oh, there's, you know, that parking in the front is a bad idea." It seems like it fits the neighborhood, it works well with that Dur Building on the corner that Member Bennett alluded to. I think when you go to the neighborhood, you'll have some, you'll have some great suggestions. Like my colleagues, I do not think that this, this building that you're proposing triggers, in my mind, the need for a small-area plan. I just don't see it as substantial, so substantial in scope that we should look at the whole area. So I would prefer, too, that you take the sketch plan to the neighborhood and get their input. And I'm sure you'll come up with something that is an improvement. You always get good ideas from the neighbors, and you, hopefully, you've gotten some here. You've got a mixed bag of opinions, but that's mine.
No, and I appreciate that. The small-area study, it was new to me. I looked up in Webster Dictionary, tried to define what it was, and it was pretty broad, you know, so I'm all for involving neighborhood, as Bennett said, that is a very active neighborhood, and there's people that are really committed to there. I love to shop in that area, I love to eat in that area, and we've been, you know, proud of the building we have there, I just want it to enhance what we have. And Scott and I will talk and visit and try to get together with the neighborhood group here and speak with Kerry here, too, he's been very helpful during the process here, too.
Okay. Member Brindle has one more comment, maybe Member Sprague has one.
I have a little, et cetera. I was at a meeting the other day at General Mills, and they have green roofs on some of their outbuildings, so as you're walking through, through a glass walkway to your left and to your right, you're looking at roofs, and they're green, and they've got different boulder kind of sculpture things. That might be an option for the roof, and have a little, a little fun with kind of teaching the neighborhood some, some new ways to use a flat surface that's up, that captures some of the rainwater and gives you some beauty. And it's not clear to me, I don't think, that the homes in the R1 area behind the building can really see the roof, so it's really more an exercise in, I wonder how this would work? But, but I was just, as Jim was finishing his comments, I was just thinking, you know, this is an opportunity, so I thought I'd put that out there.
Well, I love the challenge, so, yes, by all means. And I appreciate your time tonight here, Councilman.
Member Sprague has another comment.
Just one more comment about the, our PUD ordinance. I think part of the change to PUD is so we could invite more environmental standards into development. And following up on Member Brindle's comments, it wouldn't be a horrible thing to see consideration of some stormwater management, whether it's cisterns or something to take that watershed off the roof and, and filter it before it goes on, and maybe some infiltration. And then also pervious pavement, not necessarily the entire lot, maybe there's sections or other hards, you know, sidewalk, entryways, whatever, that could be pervious, and that could go towards achieving that objective.
Yeah, and that goes to the issue of, you know, we did down, this is a much broader surface, but down at the Target, we had them add in some landscape features into the surface of the parking lot. It could take up some parking, but you're underparked anyway, you know, if it only takes up a space or two to get some trees and some shrubs in there periodically to break up that hard-surface look, you might think about that as well. And I, all of us should keep in mind, when you look west at something like this, and then you turn and look east across the street to that strip mall in Minneapolis, it's a world of difference. And so I commend you for, you know, wanting to do something down here and working at, all over our town, you worked on improving things that needed improving, and you've done a great job of it.
Well, thank you, and the landscaping is important to us, and I guess we're chasing the parking count to the max here, trying to get close, knowing we couldn't quite hit it there. But I encourage you to take a walk through the courtyard of the Brownstones on Francis Spring, and see, which we feel is a real signature piece to the community, given back there with the opportunity you gave us on that site there. And Scott and I will work further on this site here and open up the conversation with the neighborhood.
Thanks, Mr. Noonan.
Thank you.
Last one, Mr. Noonan.
Thank you.
All right.
Contact information for the Neighborhood Association can be found at mna-edina.org.
The next matter was one we pulled from the Consent Agenda 4D. I think Member Swenson had a motion with regard to this matter, or maybe one correction in the motion?
Well, I do, but I think Member Brindle wanted to talk about the adoption of the Consent Agenda position first, before I made my motion, so I would open it up to Member Brindle's comments on the Consent Agenda part.
Thank you. I did speak with, to City Manager Neil about the Consent Agenda, and he did assure me that the Consent Agenda will be a list of items that are in the Consent Agenda for that evening. That was my concern.
Okay. Then I would strike number three, we don't have, currently have a unanimity statement, and I would move approval of everything else on this.
And just resequence everything else in the same sequence as in...
Yep.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, state and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Resolution 2011-46, resolution accepting various donations. E, excuse me. E, we pulled, and does somebody want to make a motion to table 4E?
So moved.
Second.
The reason being that we are going to have meetings with all the board and commission chairs upcoming, and we thought that this would be more appropriate to address after we had that meeting with them. All right, we've got a motion and a second to table 4E, until such time as we've had a chance to meet with the board and commission chairs, and then we will readdress this issue. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. And then we have 4F, resolution accepting various donations, we have a motion.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Carried. Donations this period are to the Edina Arts Center, the names of the donors will be on the website.
Your Honor, if I might, I have a donation-related question for our city manager. In our correspondence packet, there is a letter from the Minneapolis Foundation thanking the city for its contribution and gift, and I emailed Manager Neil earlier today, asking for some clarification on this.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilman Bennett. I think that this particular item might be construed as a contribution, but it's certainly not a gift. This is a payment that the city made to be part of the, the new Regional Economic Development Organization. The council did have, on a vote on this particular issue, and authorized a $10,000 payment. We direct, we were invoiced for that payment, which I would consider to be a membership in that organization. That payment went directly to that organization, they must have an agreement with the Minneapolis Foundation to be their fiscal agent, and that triggered a response.
They were originally the Actascap project that came in, right?
Exactly.
That's what I assumed it was, but you're right, the holding entity was confusing to me, too.
Yes, so that, so we weren't part, we didn't pay the, we didn't pay them, we paid the organization directly for our membership. Appears their fiscal agency agreement triggered this, probably a form letter back to us, so that's how I would characterize it.
I think Mr. Taylor should be contacted and told not to send a form letter like this to a unit of government.
I will do that.
Thank you. All right. Community comment. See no one coming forward. We will move on to correspondence petitions, section of the agenda, anything other than what we have on the dais, Manager Neil?
No.
All right. Mayor and council comments. First item was, that we needed to deal with, was student board and commission applications and interviews. I wanted to talk to the council about how they wanted to handle that this year. Last year, of course, for those of us that weren't doing it, we thought it was a really good process.
Last year, I'll jump in here, Member Bennett and I tag teamed, and we had a great time doing it. We interviewed 26 high school students, and on eight boards and commissions, then recommended appointment of 16 of those students to those seats. And it was the first year that we appointed two students to each of the boards and commissions. Now, over this year, we've had an additional board request students, and that was the Edina... and that was the Edina Housing Foundation. So we would then have an additional board to have two.
Did the council members that did all this interviewing last year feel that they were overburdened or that we should conduct these interviews in a different process, similar to what we've done with regular board and commission interviews with a full council? Or do you have suggestions, having been through this process once, on how we should handle this?
Well, Member Brindle took on the responsibility of scheduling, which was, which was, I think, immense. And, and it would, were we to choose to interview as a full council, we probably would be well advised to follow what we've done for the adult board and commission members and set some dates, and these are the times, and because we accommodated, we accommodated people going to summer camp. We accommodated people to going to Europe, people coming back from Europe, and it did stretch the process up.
And telephone interviews.
A couple of telephone interviews from people who just weren't going to be in town at all. It was, however, a really, really good process. And I think it was good for the students as well as for us, some of whom had not had that experience of, of an interview before. It also, I think, gave them realistic expectations of the boards and commissions. We invited board and commission chairs to participate as well. And Diane Plunkett-Latham from the Energy and Environment Commission and Arnie Bigby from the Human Rights and Relations Commission were able to participate. So I would be open either to doing it as a subcommittee or to opening it to the council as a whole.
It might, you know, being that this is the first time for some of the students, some of whom are sophomores, of going through an interview, it might be a little, we, we, we wouldn't want it to be so formal. And having it just be two of us, I think, really helped that with, with some of the kids. But, but it, it was wonderful. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't hesitate a second to do it again.
Do you think that having a, a subcommittee of two created more comfort for them in the interview process?
Oh, I think so.
The formality of a full council?
Yeah, and I, and I think it made it a lot easier to, to have the question and answer session because we both knew what questions we wanted to ask. And each interview is unique, but we were both able to converse very easily with them, so.
So how did the information come back to the full body?
With the recommendation, with names. With a page-long report.
Yeah.
Number of students, high schools, grades, appointments being recommended. We tried to fit as many seniors into spots as we had available, understanding that they weren't going to have another chance. And, but we also were looking for the, the interest and the qualifications, and then also trying to match them to what the board and commission had to offer. For example, the Human Rights and Relations Commission, while international human rights are a serious, genuine concern in the community, also they are very eager to do work on a local level. So they were looking specifically for students who had some understanding of human rights issues on a local level and an eagerness to work on those.
And you've got commission chairs who genuinely look forward to having students almost in a mentoring role and giving them opportunities to build some experiences that, that they can learn from and carry forward with. So that's to be congratulated and thanked as well.
I know I sat at the student table. I kind of, I, I crashed the student table at the boards and commissions dinner, which kind of stifled some of their conversation. But I sort of interviewed them as to how they were doing, and one young woman who was serving on planning talked about how the chair of planning called her and met with her twice to explain the process of planning and, and just how important that was. The other one who was on the art center talked with such excitement about the new exhibit they've just done in conjunction with high school art. So I think it's, I think it's working really well. I do agree with you that it is a mentoring role in the interview process on through, and I like the fact that you did it as, as a twosome. I thought that made sense. And you were very flexible. I don't think as a council, we could really afford to be quite that flexible. So I would, I would support having two of us do the interview process.
Manager Neil, let me ask you a question. Do you think that the subcommittee, and we'll probably look for volunteers for the subcommittee, could get some help on scheduling?
Certainly. I, I was going to offer that to you. But I do think that Councilmember Swenson has raised a good subject. With this group of folks, flexibility is important. And so having to schedule something as a, as a noticed public meeting might make it more difficult than it already is. But, but we will provide you some staff assistance to, in terms of contacting and following up, and we can definitely help you with that.
Do I hear a general inclination from the two of you to do it again?
Certainly.
Now, Member Sprague, is this something you would be passionate about?
You know, if the two of you are interested to do it again, I wouldn't take you away from your passions. I think the process was efficient and effective, and if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to appoint a subcommittee of Members Brindle and Bennett to interview student applicants for the upcoming year. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. Carried. And then we have the issue of park board vacancies to discuss. And I wanted to get the council's thoughts on whether we ought to reopen the interview process or hire from, or hire, point from our existing pool here that we've already interviewed. And let me have your thoughts on that, please.
We have a pool of four. We only need two. We've always said that we wouldn't reopen applicants. We lost one woman, one man. If I look at the ranking of the park board, we have a man and a woman who would fit in with reappearance so that we would maintain the same gender back in that we lost. So I would say we pick from existing pool one.
You know, the issue was raised with me with regard to Mr. Deeds, who is a professor, who has a teaching schedule that conflicts this semester with park board meetings. And we can anticipate that he is going to fail our standards for attending meetings. And I am wondering if we should entertain, because the schedule of his will change, and it will change shortly, if we should entertain the notion of appointing one person tonight and then looking at reapplication, reappearance to allow Mr. Deeds to reapply, should his schedule change? What are people's thoughts on that?
I was trying to recall, because I know we've been really, really careful about informing people about the attendance policy, and I'm sure that we brought this up. Was his conflict raised with us?
I, I don't believe so, and I think.
He didn't have a conflict at the time.
Not, not on a 414. It's a 414 school, so no. Their, their spring semester starts at the end of January, beginning of February at the very latest.
I don't know, I don't know how it happened.
In February.
It's hard to recall exactly how we got into this predicament where we appointed somebody to the park board who...
Well, to be, to be consistent with our past practice, to be consistent with what the practice has been now in the last couple of years that I think has served us well, we, he, he could be contacted once that third meeting is missed and asked if he would like to reapply if a certain... I thought the wording of the letter last fall was really wonderful.
But wouldn't that be then for Jan, for reap, reapply in December for any openings that would come next year?
Well, what we've, what we've permitted people to do when they are in circumstances that are changing is we've permitted them to reapply for that term. For instance, one of the persons from whom reappearance was sought this winter had just been reappointed in November. So this idea that there would be a reappearance and some kind of need to reapply soon has, is not unique. We've faced it before. So in terms of past practice, we could certainly follow that practice. I think I would recommend it at this time, given what we were looking for for skill sets.
Has he asked us to do that?
Well, if he's not interested in doing it, then we, then I would want to, want to appoint from the, from the pool, from the pool who have gone through the process that we have set and followed.
So appoint one now, wait and see if he fails the attendance policy, and then deal with that issue in terms of a request of him as to whether he wants to reapply?
Well, in fact, now that I'm thinking about it, I do remember his comment about having served on a body that I think had fewer permitted absences. So I know that we had that conversation.
Yeah, we did.
I'd be comfortable with that process. I, I don't know how this happened, but I think he was, he did have a skill set that we thought was valuable to the park board, and would like to give him a chance to reapply, should he fail the attendance requirement. So it would be, it would actually be premature to appoint two people right now, anyway. So is there a motion for a, a single appointment?
So moved.
All right, well, let me have a, let me have a motion and a name as well.
Oh, I can, I can state the name here. Okay. I would, I would move in, in congruence with her principle of having gender balance, I would move Susan Jacobson to the park board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded that we appoint Susan Jacobson to the park board for a term expiring February 1st, 2012. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. Carried. All right, good. Thanks, folks. Member Sprague, let's start with you.
Oh, you're starting with me, huh? Okay, I'm gonna have to try to read these notes.
For council comments.
First of all, I want to follow up on some correspondence from Kitty O'Day, who is here tonight testifying about the ordinance change in the Heritage Preservation District as well. She was talking about some type of promotions to encourage people to use the dog park. And one thing she talked about was a free dog day or something like that. I think that, that would be worthy to consider by staff at some point. The mayor and Member Brindle and I were at a regional economic development conference this week, hosted by General Mills, and it was a great, a great forum. And it, it triggered me to come back to an idea I've talked about before, which is having our own economic development plan for the city, strategic plan that deals with marketing and promotion and selling the fact that we're a great place to do business for employers, and, and a strategic plan to attract and retain and expand our, our employment base here. So when a, a new economic director is appointed, I, I'd like to, you know, look at forming a, I don't know if it's a, a work group or a task force or a subcommittee or what have you, whatever the structure is, but we should, we should bring this up. It's important to do this planning coming out of a recession to position ourselves and never take it for granted that we're a great place to do business. The, we got some, some correspondence from the Tri-City Health Partners. This is Bloomington, Richfield, and Edina. And they do, they report about this, this study that, that looks at Edina Youth Health. And it's every three years. The last one was in '07, and then they did one for 2010. And it looks at physical activity and nutrition of our youth. It looks at tobacco and drug and alcohol use and teen pregnancy. And I'm happy to report that our alcohol and tobacco use is, is falling. And I was really encouraged to see that. I know that this organization started in '95, and since they've, they've been focusing on this, it looks like most of the at-risk behaviors have, have been reduced. And also that physical activity and fruit and vegetable consumption are up. So it's great to know that we're doing what we can to support healthy youth. The report, the full report, which is called the Edina Youth Health Update, is available at tricitypartners.org. Also got a, a SHIP report, the statewide health improvement program newsletter, and talked about, SHIP is assisting the wellness committees at Edina Creek, Creek Valley and Highland Elementary School to hold a Walk or Bike to School Day on May 5th, which is a great idea. I actually just toured Highland School, and I'm happy to hear that we're doing what we can, again, to encourage youth to be active and to get to school on their feet or on their bike. It also talks about safe, safe routes to school. There was a workshop helping for, for communities to do strategic planning to position their communities to be competitive for funding to support safe routes to school. And Director Hool, I was just wondering, is there any update from our, from your staff department on, on our participation in safe routes to school?
I, I don't have an update as far as the safe routes to school. As far as I know, they don't have any funding available at this, at this time for the safe routes to school. There is a, there is a conference coming up in August that I plan on attending, a Safe Routes to School Conference that is actually in town here, so.
I know that some of the, the schools have, have committees working on safe routes to school. Are they asking for any collaboration from the city, or, you know, Highlands has one right now?
Yeah, they, they haven't. I know the Bike Edina Task Force is, is, has a group or a person assigned to the safe routes that's working with the, the school district also. And we're working in, with the Bike Edina Task Force also.
Okay. Potholes. Get a lot of calls on potholes here in the city. And did you know we have a great website page where you can report these potholes to staff, among other things? And I wanted to bring this up on the overhead here. So let's take a look at that page and, and walk people through how to report the potholes online.
This is what Jennifer actually pulled up for the webpage. I always fumble when it's live. If you go to thecityedina.com, on the homepage, you have a, if you go to the city departments under engineering, public works, then the step three would be down on the lower right, there's a report, report a problem. This not, not only covers potholes, but it also covers street light out, street light flickering, all the way down to water leaks, water meter problems and such. What, what this does behind the scenes is actually, if you click on that, fill out the information, what the issue is, it goes to the correct team leader within the public works department, and it also goes to one of our assistants that tracks these, these requests. So it gets to the right person right away, so then they can go ahead and create a work order on, on that and, and get the, the issue taken care of. Potholes, we've been filling, ever since, you know, the pavement's dry enough to start filling them here. We actually fill potholes year-round. We have two patch trucks that you do with the conventional way with hot asphalt, and then we have a spray patcher, which is a little bit higher technology that, that actually blows, it's, it's a truck that you see with the, the long attachment out front of the truck. It blows the hot air or air out of the, out of the pothole to get the debris out of the pothole. And then it blows in some oil, some aggregate, and then some more oil on top of it. And that seems to, to hold the best as, as far as that, that spray patcher. And we have that going about 14 hours a day right now.
Is, is the, does one of those methods involve more or less staff? I mean, it sounds like the second method is just the driver and the machine. Is that?
That's, that's correct. The other, the other method usually is one to two people, usually two people on, on the, on the patch trucks. We also do a, we'll be doing a spring blitz or a blitz here, where we'll be putting asphalt on almost all the trucks that we have and just blitz the city. We've done that the last few years, once it gets dry enough and we don't have snow in the forecast. And, and we, we'll be out there filling these potholes. But it's been a bumper crop this year. Got potholes on a lot of, a lot of the roadways. There's two other ways that you can report one. Does this call our, our street, street department line at 826-0374, or go to Edina Mill, and that, that'll get routed to the appropriate person? appropriate person.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, we, we only fill potholes that we know about. So if you're out there in TV land, you know of a pothole on your street, you gotta report it. They're not gonna drive down every street to look for these potholes. And a lot of people don't know that. They're, they're waiting for public works to come out. That's not how it's done. It's on a report basis. So please, email, call in, use the website. I think I counted three clicks to get that report to you or to one of your team leaders, and we will fix the potholes. So thank you, Director Hool. I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Member Swinson.
No, nothing.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. I have three sidewalk-related questions or requests. First of all, there was a petition delivered to City Hall earlier today, and I would like to move that we accept it and place it on staff's agenda. I believe that takes formal action, and that is from residents of 44th Street near the intersection with Wooddale Avenue.
All right, good. Is there a second?
Second.
I guess distracted.
Sure.
It's a, it's a petition by the residents of 44th Street near the intersection with Wooddale Avenue for construction of the sidewalk segment that is shown in the comprehensive plan from Wooddale Avenue east to Coteen Park.
I don't want to answer about it.
Yeah, several of us, yeah.
Okay.
But it's the one exactly.
But I thought I was told that the, the houses there were fronted too close to the street, which I was confused because I thought they sat back from the street.
Director Hool and I have been, well, there are homes that are very close to the street because they're in the former streetcar right-of-way, but Director Hool and I have been working with residents since that public hearing, and one of the residents and her husband have circulated a petition. They have signatures from most, not all, of their neighbors because there are some homes, there's one home under construction. There are, I think they have found it particularly difficult to get ahold of one of the other neighbors. But they have spoken with most of their neighbors. Director Hool, I believe, has been out with the city forester, looked at trees.
Oh, second. That's all you needed to give me. You gave me enough information. If you made the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so that.
Discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we accept the petition referenced by Member Bennett for referral to engineering for the feasibility of building a sidewalk in the area petition Any further comment? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay. Carrie.
And is this my copy or is this an original? Great, thank you. Second sidewalk I am going to request a feasibility study for is for the Xerxes Avenue on the west side. It is, there is sidewalk north from Trunk Highway 62 to, I believe, 62nd Street. Then there is no sidewalk for a span of several blocks. I don't know the exact terminus to the north. Do I have to know that? It's in the comprehensive plan. If anybody?
Fifty-fourth.
Fifty-fourth or fifty-fifth?
Fifty-sixth.
Fifty-sixth? Okay, so it's that missing segment. Missing segment from 56th Street to 62nd Street on Xerxes Avenue. I would like to request a feasibility study on that. When I was out last fall, there were residents who were requesting both a France Avenue-style restriping of their roadway. They were very impressed with what had been accomplished on France Avenue with traffic movement and speeds, and they were also requesting a sidewalk. And the.
Should we take a second on that?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. And do we need a vote on that?
We do. I thought maybe you had another comment.
Nope, just another sidewalk.
Any other discussion on that issue? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. Carrie.
And the, thank you. The third sidewalk I am going to request studied is the sidewalk on 42nd Street, west from France, from France Avenue. There is a segment in existence on the north in front of what is now Golden Years Montessori School, east of the intersection with Grimes Avenue. There, that is a major walking route for people who are trying to access the park and Golden Years School. And it is in both the comprehensive plan and in the recommendations contained in the Northeast Edina Transportation Study that this body adopted before I was elected to it.
Tell me the segment again, please.
It would be from the city border west, east to France Avenue, including or accepting that segment that is presently in front of Golden Years Montessori.
Oh, so you're going from Wooddale to France.
No, it doesn't, the city border is not all the way west at Wooddale at that point, but to France Avenue.
Almost.
It's Oakdale?
Okay.
Oakdale.
Forty-second Street.
And I plan, I have intended to hold a conversation, have held fleeting conversations with the council member from St. Louis Park who represents that ward of St. Louis Park about extending the sidewalk west to Quentin. Quentin is the major east-west street on the west end of this.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we need a second? Is there a second?
So, a second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated to do the feasibility study for the area requested, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. Carrie.
The only follow-up to that is that I believe that just as was done in the Highlands neighborhood, that there is a walking shed area, and I would recommend, if I may, that that walking shed be looked at. And the walking shed, as I would define it, would be from 40th Street on the north to Morningside Road on the south.
As far as cost?
As far as distribution of the cost. The, the area, 42nd Street is a major route. It's also a route to public transit, to the bus.
All right, thank you.
Can I go back to me?
Sure.
Because I was reminded that I did have something. You know, I miss one meeting, and I lose all sense of, okay. We did get a letter about construction and noise, and Director Teague, for construction noise for homes, I know we have times that it's allowed and everything, but can we let our constituents know when they're having a problem with noise? And usually it's going to be after when obviously the government part, administration offices are closed. Noise is usually a health thing, but is it possible then for them to call the non-emergency police line to make a complaint? How does one complain about noise that's happening and get it validated when our offices are closed?
I'm not sure. I may have to ask for some help from someone.
Oh, thank you, Director.
What we usually tell our council, what we usually tell people on our construction projects, which would probably apply to other private ones, is that they can call the non-emergency police, police line, explain their situation, and usually they'll send a squad out, and that'll usually shut down the folks. And we encourage people to do that on our construction projects because it's written right in our specifications what our, what our noise ordinance is.
Okay. And Jennifer, the noise ordinance, I assume, is on our website? Okay. I should have given you a heads up so we could have had that really cute PowerPoint presentation that you did for Member Sprague, but I'm not on my game tonight. I'm sorry.
Member Swinson, if I can just follow up on that as well, because I get construction complaints. It's a multi-department effort to deal with these complaints sometimes because you've got onsite issues that Carrie, Planner Teague would be dealing with. You've got on-street issues that the police department would deal with. You've got the building department dealing with things on the site as well and debris, and then you've got health dealing with noise and other things. So if someone has problems, where, where's the best place to start? Because it's got, you've got four departments involved. I mean, I've been told it's best to start with, with Mr. Kirchman in the building department, since he issued the permit, and then he can contact the other departments. But I'd love to hear from staff about that.
If, if there is a noise issue right then and there, I would, I would contact, if it's during, during normal business hours, contact the health department. If it's off hours, contact the police department.
Okay.
It's no different than a loudspeaker noise or anything else that you had going.
In this particular letter writer, she had a number of issues, but really noise was her primary one.
Generally, though, council members, Sprague and council members, if you, we work so collaboratively as a staff that if you start with any one of us, we will be able to work with our peers to resolve the issue.
Thank you.
My recollection of the letter, which I read this afternoon, is that for this particular homeowner, the issue is not noise occurring outside of the permitted time, but the fact that the noise has been occurring during the permitted time and is now going on its third or fourth summer because of the amount of reconstruction on her street. I know that we did amend the code back in 2007 to tighten those hours just a bit, but there is activity permitted on holidays in addition to the other times, and that was part of her concern. I guess I would like to revisit this issue. I think we don't want to dampen rebuilding in the community, and at the same time, I think we have to balance the right of residents to peacefully enjoy their homes and sleep and, and so.
I mean, the Fourth of July could be a noise-free, other than firecracker day.
Well, the, the point that struck me as the mother of a college student and a graduate student is she said her kids hadn't been able to sleep later than 7:00 a.m. on a summer morning for the last four years. And I don't know that we would survive at my house if that was the case.
I did follow up with her today.
Thank you. Doctor. I appreciate that.
Member Bennett, you had one more item, I think, that involved an event on the 30th of April.
Yes, that is the Homeless Youth in Suburbia, which will take place on Saturday, April 30th, 2011, a presentation and community discussion, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Bloomington Civic Plaza. This is on Old Shakopee Road in Bloomington, east of, west, I'm sorry, 35W, and east of Normandale Boulevard. Again, a free community event, and I encourage anyone in this community who works with youth or is concerned about this issue to attend.
What's the date again?
Saturday, April 30th, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Bloomington Civic Plaza, Bloomington City Hall.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
I have a couple jottings. An event coming up on Saturday, April 30th. It is a morning event, and maybe someone here remembers the exact time, but it's the bike rodeo that will be put on by the Bike Edina Task Force at the Highland School parking lot. So bring your bikes, bring your helmets. And what they do, they're looking for volunteers who can help, but they'll fit the helmets for the kids and fit the, fit the bikes for kids who are growing. And, but for more information on that, you can go to bikedyna.org. And that's our.
I think it might be 10:30.
10:30?
I think so.
It is a morning event. And by all means, if, if parents and older brothers and sisters want to volunteer, they are looking for people to step up. Just a follow-on on the builder's noise. We've actually had some terrific situations with some major remodels in our neighborhood where the builder actually has sent each of us a letter saying, you know, we're your new neighbor for a while, and if, if there's noise, if there's anything that, that bothers, here, call us at this phone number. And, and that is, I applaud builders who consider themselves neighbors of the neighborhood that they are working in because during that period of time, they are a neighbor, and they are there every day. And if they can see themselves in a neighborly role, it, I think it, it helps all around. And, and it's much appreciated. I certainly know that from the receiving end. Just a follow-on comment after Member Sprague talking about the Economic Development Forum last week, which was terrific, terrific forum. It was put on by the Itasca Group. The Itasca Project is a job growth task force, and it's in response to the fact that our job growth in this state is declining. For a long time, we were a leader as we created companies and, and people, amazing people in our mids created companies like 3M and General Mills and Medtronic and Cargill, and you can name many, many more, and Pillsbury. And if you, if you think about it, we haven't had a major company pop up in our mids in about the last 20 years. It's been, we've had a dry spell. So this job growth task force is a way to kind of, kind of spur that on and encourage people to be creative, to be entrepreneurs. There are some partners in this. Forefront is a brand-new partnership, and it, its role is, it's a nonprofit. It identifies, attracts, nurtures, and supports emerging inventors, entrepreneurs, and artists. So this would be, I think it's forefront, for the number four, front.org. But this would be an organization that if you've got a company and you've got a mission and you want to get that known, this is a company that can help you form, form an image and get out there. And that is in partnership with the Minneapolis-St. Paul Regional Economic Development Partnership, which is also a nonprofit dedicated to providing public and private leadership. So this is the process of discovering where these entrepreneurial efforts are happening, and from, from a, from a state and, and city and county standpoint, pulling those initiatives out into the community so that you can be promoted and your business can be seen because that's what it's going to take to create another 3M or another General Mills. So it was terrific. But look for the Itasca Group in the newspaper and, and some of those things because they're going to be making some amazing inroads.
Thank you. Tomorrow, I invite all of you, I'm sure you have been invited, to the Whole Foods Groundbreaking tomorrow noon. I think it starts at 11:30. I think Manager Neil and I will be out there. Hope the rest of you can join us. I was really pleased to have Member Brindle and Member Sprague join me at the Regional Economic Development Forum at General Mills. It was a real pleasure to see him walk in. And when you've been working on these things, you're wondering if this information that's being imparted is as effective as you want it to be, but I think everybody really saw value in it, including Mark Ruff, our financial advisor, who was also there, who told me tonight that he thought it was a tremendous event that we should do at least annually. So we'll talk to folks about that, that are working on all these different things. Thursday afternoon, last Thursday, we did the groundbreaking for 169, 494, in the new Helmut and Johnson law firm building. It was a beautiful building. And we, we passed around a lot of credits, but I neglected to mention Director Hool. And I don't want to miss that opportunity this evening to talk about the, the good work that Director Hool did with his counterparts in Eden Prairie and Bloomington to help put together a plan that, that we voted on and granted municipal consent to in conjunction with Mindot. He did a terrific job. And what I, what I failed to cover last Thursday, I'm not failing to cover tonight. I want our whole town to know what a great job you did in helping facilitate that reconstruction of that interchange. So thank you very much. And if you're interested in going to the bike rodeo on Saturday, you ought to really be interested in going to highway cleanup before the bike rodeo. You could come out and help our morning road crew starting at 8 o'clock.
Hey, you need, Highway 100 needs a lot of it at that second.
Cleanup highway 100 from Perkins, basically, to, down to the Crosstown. And if you want to join me in my favorite spot, it's cleaning up right below City Hall here so that it looks decent when you pull off the highway. So we'll be doing that early on Saturday morning. And then, see, we got a Southwest LRT meeting this week. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about are coyotes. We have, we're hitting into the season now, I think, where they could really proliferate. And they've been doing some damage around town. And I've been party to a string of emails between the chief of police and Manager Neil and other folks. We have a resident whose small dog got snatched out of their backyard and, down in Delaney, and the housewife, the wife had to go out and fight off the coyote for the dog. So we, you know, my, my sense is we need to start talking about this issue, and personally, I think we need to do something about it. I don't personally see the coyote as a part of the natural environment in Edina, in urban area. And I think we need to look at some sort of a policy that does something about them. But people more knowledgeable about how to deal with a predatory creature like a coyote should offer some advice.
Chief Long and Tim Hunter could respond to that.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think if I could offer, we could, I could talk with Chief Long, and we could have maybe a brief presentation at the next council meeting about what our options are because there are some.
Or even a work session, but folks might like to know. Or even a work session, but folks might like to know publicly what they are, too.
If we do a work session, that work session wouldn't be for at least a month, because we're kind of hard programmed out.
Let's get them on in front of the council then.
Okay.
The one letter I saw from the Kelsey Court person necessitates that we want to move on this by the next council meeting.
Well, we've got one that we see pretty regularly in the woods behind our house, kind of a mangy-looking, big animal, so it gets your attention. It certainly does.
Okay, that was all I had on my list. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Municipal Legislative Commission has been working this past spring to bring more attention to the issue of property tax fairness, in particular, bringing new attention to a new metric that's being used that compares the ratio of property taxes to one's personal income. And if you've seen any of that data, there's substantial differences around the state, in various regions of the state, as to what percentage of our personal income we pay in property taxes. And there's been a fair amount of discussion over the last couple of years about whether that structural fairness issue is one that should be addressed legislatively. The Municipal Legislative Commission, of which we are a member, has launched a new website called propertytaxfairness.com, which seeks to educate the public, and I think public officials as well, about how that metric can be used, and offers some legislative ideas that we hope we can get behind. So if you'd like to take a look at that, I think that would be helpful, and they would appreciate particularly from council members if you have any feedback you'd like to give on about the new website, because it has just been put into play here maybe today or yesterday.
So it's dot com, not dot org?
Dot com. Yeah, it is dot com, I'm looking at it. Our May 3 work session is a joint meeting between the council and board and commission chairs. We are doing some work this week and early next week on the agenda for that meeting. If you have some ideas about issues you'd like to have discussed at that meeting, please let me know. I am going to raise that same question with the board and commission chairs to elicit similar preferences from them as well. State of the Community event is Wednesday, April 27th. Mayor Hovland, myself, and Superintendent Dressen will all be delivering short messages about the state of the community at that event, at Interlochen Country Club over the lunch hour that day. Our 2010 independent audit is wrapping up, and we should be getting some preliminary results from 2010 sometime in May, and the auditors, as is the custom here, I believe, will make their appearance with the council, to the council at a council meeting, probably the first council meeting in July. And I think we will also plan to have a work session that evening dealing with that same issue. I think that's the custom here. As you all know, this is Board of Appeal and Equalization season for property tax values. We've had our first hearing night, and that was April 11th. At this point, we are down to four appeals, which is a very modest number. Last year, it was nine. Those four appeals are kind of under consideration right now. The board is going to reconvene on April 25th to make final decisions on those four. But when you, given the fact that there are 20,000 parcels in the city, having four, where we are still not in agreement about valuation, is, I think, a pretty significant comment on the quality of the work that our staff does in that regard. The golf course RFP that we've talked about for many weeks is out, and it's in the hands of qualified consultants, and they have been instructed to return their proposals to us no later than May 4th. Staff, John and Ann, John Caprios and Ann Catry are also working right now on an Edinburgh RFP, and they got, we got that direction from the council and also from the park board, so something very similar to what we put together for the golf course. We're working on that right now, and we're going to bring that to the park board at their first meeting in May. And finally, I'll reference the same event tomorrow, the Whole Foods groundbreaking, ice breaking, snow breaking, whatever it ends up being, is tomorrow at 11:30 a.m., and we're looking forward to it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you mention the volunteer recognition reception?
I did not.
All right. Well, we can mention that.
Would you like me to?
April 28th is the volunteer recognition reception at Edinburgh Park, starts at 5:00, and we have a tremendous number of people that will be recognized for their sense of volunteerism in the community. It's a great event, and I urge you to attend. So, that's it. Anything else? You stand adjourned.